2:08 PM on February 19th, 2020. This is a workshop. I'd like to call this workshop to order. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
None here, Mr. Chair.
Having none, do I have a motion?
Uh, I move that we approve the agenda as written.
A second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
Hi.
Hi, Sheriff Boyce.
Yes?
Sheriff Page.
Aye.
Agenda approved unanimously.
Alrighty, we're gonna go on to projects. 3A, Towers Workshop Proposal. Curry County expand current Day Wireless Tower Maintenance Agreement to include managing the tower inter-agency agreements and billings. Richard Christiansen, Roadmaster; Jeremy Dumire, Emergency Services Coordinator; and Bethany Davidson, Contracts and Business Development Manager, Day Wireless. Mr. Christiansen, good afternoon, sir.
Hello, Commissioners. Yeah, this workshop is follow-up to our last month's Budget Committee meeting where the Budget Committee requested we do a Towers Workshop. And I invited two past Roadmasters to this meeting, as well as Day Wireless representatives, and Jeremy Dumire from Emergency Services. So, what the Road Department proposes is that the Curry County professionally manage the towers, as we would any other county project, like in our bridges and our road slides. And Day Wireless has the expertise to properly manage our towers and our agreements. And, uh... This, uh...this workshop is to propose that the Board consider amending our current agreement with Day Wireless for just doing maintenance to also include management.
Okay.
And, uh...that the...also, what we're proposing is that the Road Department no longer manage towers. It's not in our wheelhouse of expertise, and it's more in line with the Emergency Services wheelhouse of expertise. So, um, I'd like to turn it over to Bethany with her presentation.
Okay.
You might have to adjust that one.
Do we have a mouse?
There's a mouse here.
You might have to adjust that microphone on your right.
You could set that on the table if you'd like. There you go.
It's crazy.
It's very sensitive.
It worked much better in our practice yesterday. Good afternoon, I'm Bethany Davidson with Day Wireless.
Would you pull that one microphone down? There you go.
Sorry, you already told me that. I'm Bethany Davidson with Day Wireless Systems. I'm our Contracts Manager for our Tower Sites Division. Our tower site, we own and operate around 200 towers on the west coast, including the few that we manage for Curry County. Uh, we currently have a site management agreement with you all, which I believe you are somewhat familiar with. Wasn't sure quite how much detail to go into. And as you know, in addition to our relationship for managing the revenue generating tenants at your facilities, our company has a strong history in relationship with the county for sales and service. And most recently, we've upgraded your microwave, which was an $820,000 substantial project. Um, a lot of what we're talking about today was previously brought up by Doug Robbins back in December 2017. I helped him prepare a lot of the information he presented, and we're still in the same situation where the county is asking for a little more help than what they're currently receiving. Um, I've had the pleasure of working with three Roadmasters since we've managed the tenants since 2011, and I give these guys a lot of credit. It's not an easy task, and just thinking that this is in addition to what they were technically hired for, which is managing your roads. It's really impressive what they have accomplished. And while I was working on my presentation back at the office, a coworker pointed out that when the wireless carriers were first getting started in the 90s, like AT&amp;T and Verizon, they started owning and operating their own towers that they had their equipment on, and they soon gave that up and handed it over to tower companies. They either sold their portfolio or had a tower company manage it because it's such a huge undertaking. And so, to think you're Curry County Roadmaster, he's your tower manager, is really impressive. I give those guys a lot of credit. So, since I don't get to put myself in front of you very often, I wanted to share with you the current state of the revenue generating tenants that we manage, since that's primarily our relationship right now. Okay. So, when we started back in 2011, AT&amp;T was co-located at Agnes, and the revenue that contract was generating was $13,000 per year. I have worked with them numerous times through some amendments and site upgrades, and that current revenue is now bringing in $58,000 per year. In addition to AT&amp;T, we have developed a strong relationship with Coos-Curry Electric and added them at two other sites. And so, what started as $13,000 in revenue has now grown to over $67,000. So, we have increased the revenue five-fold since 2011, and even with our revenue share, which is our payment, Curry County has still received quadruple revenue from where you started. And that's a fact I'm very proud of, and we've worked really hard to get there. And I know we could increase this more if we had larger resources to work with, which is something we would like to talk about down the road, is when you get into a new tower budget, we need a budget for larger shelters. Your shelters are so packed, it might be an issue if Curry County wants to upgrade their equipment, let alone add commercial, extra commercial tenants as well. And the compound size of your leased area is very small, and that's something with, uh, when your ground leases expire, or when we go to do new construction, we can just ask for a larger area, and if it's available, you're basically given it, and that would give you more space to expand. So, what we're here to talk about today, though, isn't what we're currently doing. It's what's going on with these public agency tenants that are in your facilities and using your assets right now, which are two different things. One, you have site rent, where you have different public agencies in your facilities using their own equipment. So, they would have their own repeater installed at your tower site and their own antenna. They may be using your combined antenna system, and they may be using your microwave system. But those users collectively, we will call site rent type users, where they're using your sites. There's also agencies using your radio systems, which we call systems users. So, they have their own radios, and they are using Curry County's repeaters that are located at your sites. Your frequencies are programmed into their radios, and they can use your system to talk to each other and probably also Curry County. So, first... Sorry, turning it up better. Okay, so these are your site rent users, the public agencies in your sites using your sites to operate their systems. The first one is ODOT, and they have agreements that are in a good place. We used a provision of our current site management agreement, which is an hourly rate that we charge of $125 per hour to assist with the public agency contracts that weren't revenue generating and part of our revenue share. So, we negotiated agreements with ODOT using a rate schedule that they have, which is pretty fair and reasonable. And as you can see, even though this doesn't show what type of equipment they have at your sites for that rate, they're paying what appears to be a decent amount. And I think these contracts are in a good place, and I recommend leaving them alone. Your other users are CFPA. They're co-located at five of your sites, and they're also using your microwave system. And we have agreements on file for most of them. Some of the documentation is a little shaky, and there's one document that's missing, one for Kate Blanco. But it's pretty clear, these agreements could use some work. They call for a share of expenses, and that hasn't accurately been shared in the past. Uh, and originally, it started out just rebuilding electricity and fuel consumption at a proportionate share. And then, um, in talking with Diana and Doug and telling them about the other costs that are involved, when Diana tried to charge them for those other costs, they pushed back, and that situation is kind of at a standstill. So, you guys need some help figuring out what we should be charging them and billing them for 2018 and 2019, for sure. So, besides CFPA, you also have Gold Beach Fire and BPA. Again, there wasn't a lot of information shared on those contracts at this point, but it's, it's pretty clear, we need to figure out if there's agreements, review them, see what we can do to get them up to speed. So, the main things I took away from the public agency site use is that most of these agreements require that Curry County is responsible for the ongoing maintenance, and they would be proportionately reimbursed for other users' use. The reimbursement doesn't appear to be occurring or not on a truly proportionate scale. Uh, many of the records are inaccurate or incomplete, and in the past, additional operating, operating costs, including insurance, taxes, labor for doing weed control, HVAC, maintenance, generator repair, uh, anything to do, maintenance on the antenna, the line, the microwave system, the FCC licensing and having those licenses monitored, and just the general tower site rent expense has not been included in, in here. And one thing that's really missing is depreciation and replacement costs. You know, these structures don't last forever, and you need to be budgeting for, for replacement structures or upgrade, and that's not, not being factored into these agreements at all. So, since these facilities are so small, um, you really need to keep in mind that the more discounted tenants you have, the less space you have for county equipment or revenue generating equipment, which as you saw on the first slide, that's a good portion of your budget is coming from those commercial tenants. Um, and as I was thinking about what I wanted to say today, I sort of equate it to, if you own a home, you have a roommate who pays. They pay their share of expenses, and they contribute, contribute to the operation of that household. And then you have that couch surfer that you let come in and, and stay there for free, and that can be fine for the short term, but it's not a long-term solution. And in your case, you have a whole house full of couch surfers. You have many couches. So, on the system side, which once again is other agencies using county-owned systems... Here is a list that has been identified, users that have been identified of your radio systems. Um, I, I don't know if this is a complete list. Again, this will take more work once we dig in, but we estimate that these users would have at least two radios on the system, so they had someone to talk to, like a dispatch and someone in the field. More likely than not, in some of the cases of these larger, the larger organizations, there's probably more than two units per agency. And we estimate that a cost for using that per unit, which is $45 per unit per month, which is a total of $540 per year. And this is a pretty reliable number to use, because we have a city up in Portland who has a radio system, and this is the rate they're charging a school district for using their radio system. So, it's a model that works both in public and private world. And just to give you an idea, if, if all that's correct, you could be receiving up to $15,000 per year right now. And those, the money that they would be paying would go to using the equipment, using the frequencies, the licensing and monitoring of the frequencies, the site operation costs, going back to having that repeater in your site, um, and budgeting for replacement, which it's my understanding the radio system is in dire need of replacement. But that's, we'll see. So, what to do? Um, for the site users, where they're in your sites, I think the best solution at this point is to adopt...actually, I went to the wrong slide, sorry. The county needs to adopt an A, Public Agency Site Rent Schedule. This is something ODOT has done. We've talked about that a lot in the past, and this is something we do in the private world, too. Um, so I, I drafted a template the way I would sort of like to see it set up, and I propose Day Wireless partnering with Curry County. You can use our input on accurate costs and what seems fair. You guys could look at the numbers, make sure we get to somewhere where everybody's comfortable, and this would be the schedule we would use to charge new public agencies coming onboard for site rent, or amending the agreements with the current users to get to these rates. So, to do that, according to John Huddle, we would have to establish an ordinance authorizing the adoption of this schedule. So, that would be a step we would have to take in order to get there. In the meanwhile, I propose we use this hourly rate that's in our current site management agreement, the $125 per hour to help public agency agreements, to get new agreements in place or amendments to help catch up on the billing. And once all that's correct and we have new agreements, those monthly rental amounts would fold into our site management agreement, and we would do a revenue share. So, back to the other slide. So, this is our revenue number right now for commercial tenants, and this is how much the county is receiving. If we get everyone paying a fair and average rate based off of what the ODOT rates are pretty much right now, that could bring in $60,000. So, I think I could get the county in the very near future up from a total of $70,000 to $89,000. And we ask that you consider to hire us for that hourly rate to get these things cleared up, folded into our site management agreement, which would take an amendment, but that's something, um, there's a draft in progress. It needs to be completed, and then we could share it with John, and then submit it for your approval. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Gold?
So, if you were to take over the contracting and, and maintenance of, well, overseeing all of this, would the county end up coming ahead or behind?
Yes. Right, right now, sorry, I wish, let me see if I can make this smaller. It'll be easier to show you that. Oh, that's too small. That's too large.
Right now, we're getting 60, and we'd get 89.
Okay, close enough.
Thank you. Yeah, right away, so, this is what you should be receiving right now from the public agency users, $23,000. So, if you add the 23 to the 47, your share of the commercial tenants, right now, you're getting about 70, which I think actually you're getting less, because I don't think the public agencies are paying this full $23,000. So, if we increased these others to pay a more accurate share of costs, plus the revenue from the commercial tenants up above, that would put the county's share at $89,000. So, it would increase about 20.
How many hours do you estimate it's gonna take you to get that up to, get everything up to speed?
I'm sorry, I totally skipped over that part. I'm estimating five hours per site rent agreement. Those are more complicated, and it's gonna take more of an outreach with those agencies. So, five hours per site customer, two hours per systems user, for a total of 75 hours. And that includes some time to spend, for us to spend collaborating with Curry County on the rate schedule.
About $12,000.
Sharing contact info. So, 75 times 125 is 9,375. And I'm hoping that is an overestimate, because you never want to underestimate. So, um, today, I would say that's the amount we're asking for approval. If we get to that and we're not there, we would then have to have another discussion on it if you want, want to continue. But I'm confident that would give us what we need.
Commissioner Gold?
What's your collection rate? I know when we're billing some of these outfits, we're, we're not getting our money. Do you think you'd have a bigger hammer than the county?
Um, I think so. We have a collection staff. First, uh, for the customers that we bill, we do it departmentally first. In our department, we have someone to collect, and if it, if we're not having success, we take it to our corporate collections before it goes to a collections agency. So, yes, and it helps, you know. If someone calls us and asks, "Why did you bill this and what are these costs?", we understand what they are and can better relate to the customer, what they are and why they're due.
So, it sounds like you've got a professional staff to handle this.
Yes.
Collection process. That's good.
Anything further?
Just for clarification, so, um, what you're looking, what you're asking is for us to consider a couple of things, and it would have to come to a future, meaning of course is, one, to refer the maintenance and the management to Day Wireless instead of Curry County.
To expand this current site management agreement to include the public agency.
Okay.
Tenants and users.
Okay. And then, as part of that, you would do all this work. You would go after these people, after our, um, users, and, um, you would make sure we're getting the site rent schedules adopted, and you'd basically be telling us what we need to do to help you do the job.
In the long run, yes. In the short term, it would be covered by the hourly fee, since this is sort of a mess we're inheriting.
I understand.
For better, lack of better words. Um, but yes, once we have the agreements, or if we're sticking with the old agreements, we would make sure they get billed correctly. We would do the collections, collect the money, and distribute it back to the county on a quarterly basis, like we currently do for the commercial tenants.
Okay, and then the other thing is, the other request of the Board is to take this out of the Road Department and put it under the Emergency Management Department.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Um, one biggie in my mind is replacement. Is the replacement, or all the replacement costs built into these fees?
Um, that, we would need to work on that. That would be considered when we start this schedule.
Because I'm not really into coming up with a $320,000 bill later on, or more.
Understandable, and that, that is something that needs to be factored into this.
That's big.
And we know it's, we know it's coming. So, that, I guess the, however the county decides to use the tower budget, the site rent customers, their costs, whatever they pay, can go back into the budget, and that would be, could be for your radio system, or it could be for the maintenance and upgrade of your tower sites. Those system users, uh, the $540 per year per unit, that, I would say that should go directly back into the radio system, because that's solely what it's used for.
Okay. Anything further?
Hands up, thank you. Couple of questions. First, uh, how long agreement did I miss that you, that you might be looking for here?
Um, I will, our current agreement, I don't have this in front of me. As the amendment would, to amend our current agreement to include the public agency tenants going forward, I'm proposing we add four, five-year renewals. Right now, I believe we have two five-year renewals. I don't have that off the top of my head, but we, we need a, a longer-term relationship. And of course, at the end of each term, it could be canceled, but the point is just to have them there in front of us, so we don't have to renegotiate that all the time.
Mr. Chair, I don't know when I'll get a chance to address three Curry County Roadmasters ever again. So, um, related to Coos Forest Protective Association, I call it Coos-Curry FPA, and sometimes they get riled up a little bit, but I was talking to Commissioner Maine from Coos County the other day, and I'm pretty sure he told me that Coos County, excuse me, CFPA was donating to Coos County, which has essentially the same kind of problems that we have. They don't, they think they have the terrain that Curry County has, which is not accurate, but they do have some very similar issues with their towers. And I understand Day Wireless has a similar agreement with them.
With Coos County?
With Coos County, yes, ma'am.
Um, we do not manage their tower sites, no.
Oh, I thought that's what he told me. Okay, alright. What, uh, Dan, or Rich, or Doug, if you're on there, do you know if, if CFPA is actually making donations to Coos County beyond, I, I think I understood him, perhaps I didn't, but for the Coos County Towers, again, they're having some very similar issues to what we have, and so it's been more of a team effort. Are any of you aware of that? Doug?
No, I, I reached out to try to get some information from them when I was there, and I never did get any back.
To the Commissioners, to the Commissioners, Doug, or CFPA?
Uh, it, it was, um, through, through their Roadmaster to, to their Commissioners, but like it, I never got any feedback.
I'll dig into that some more. I'd just be interested to know to what, uh, because Coos, Coos Forest is definitely dependent on both counties, and they, they have a little bit of their territory that goes into the eastern, southeastern edge of Douglas County, but, um, so I just learned that like, less than 10 days ago. So, I'll, I'll find out and see if they're helping and what that might mean to us and this unlikely agreement.
Yeah, that could be a good conversation to share. And I would say CFPA, they're, again, I, I'm not showing based on equipment, so it's hard to compare prices so much, but you would, looking at this, you can see CFPA is paying so much less than ODOT for a very similar service. And if they're affiliated with the state, I think they would understand that they could probably honor the state's rate schedule just as good as.
Part of that is the Oregon Department of Forestry budget is really have, having some struggles with the amount of fires that they have been dealing with, and so that might be part of the reason now. I don't know, but, uh, I think it is connected, definitely. So, yeah, we'll have that conversation and, and report back to everyone.
Well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the, one, other things I'd like to address is, uh... Budget Committee member, Richard Toad, brought to my attention this 911 cellphone tax that's coming up for emergency. And, uh, so Jeremy's been kind of looking in that, and what we really want to look at is, there's another county that has towers, ours, Clamath County, they put $50,000 away a year in sinking funds for capital improvements, and we have no sinking funds, and we have about four, three to four million dollars of capital improvements that need to be done in the near term. And so, you know, what we'd like to try to do is see if we could, if, once this 911 cellphone tax starts happening, is if that could be dedicated towards towers for sinking funds for an operation and maintenance shortfall that we have right now, because right now, what Day Wireless has presenting, they're bringing an extra $20,000 into our revenue stream, but we are currently taking $50,000 out of the revenue fund, so we're still $30,000 short, just in our operations and maintenance. So, that's, we need to look at additional funds like that, but also, too, is, now, this would be a first step. The next step would be that we actually do like a capital improvement plan for towers, so that way we could lay all these deficiencies out, get a cost associated, have a plan that's laid out for, because Commissioners, Roadmasters, staff, committee members come and go, and things need to not be lost, and things need to keep moving forward.
Do you know, is, the life of these towers is what, 20 years, 25 years on the, on the coast? Okay. Yeah, so that's, that's how you, you budget that, is you figure replacement every 20 years, whatever they cost, and divide it by 20.
Don't forget about inflation.
Yeah. Alright. Commissioner Boyce?
So, with all, seriously, with all three Roadmasters here, we, they seem to be in agreement that this is definitely the direction to go. I'm, I'm, I'm sensing. This is your recommendation.
This is, this is the Road Department's recommendation, and there's support from the past two Roadmasters.
Thank you. Just wanted to hear that for the public. Thank you. Please.
Um, my name's Dan Cromley. I'm retired. I'm a volunteer. I'm a lot of things now, but I'm not a worker. The towers, I believe, were, current system was set up in around '04, something like that, so they're, you know, on the backside of their life. But we ran into some issues right away that were beyond our ability to really resolve easily, especially since, as he said, you know, you're asking folks here on a late basis to do fairly technical things with towers that they don't have to normally deal with on a daily basis. So, we actually hired Day Wireless, I think, first to manage the system at Agnes, because we had a, a wireless client that wanted to move in there. We didn't have any idea, what should we charge? Should we just accept their proposal in their language? That probably wouldn't be the smartest thing to do. So, Day Wireless actually came onboard to do that to start with, I believe. And then, the next time we got basically Bethany involved was when ODOT helped us completely rebuild the site at Bosley, which is an off-the-grid site. It was problematic throughout its life, it ran basically on a generator and with some solar help, but it, it was a constant headache. I mean, if, if our shop foreman was here, he could tell, I can't tell you how many trips he made up there in the early morning or at night, because the system was down due to ice or snow or out of fuel, or the generator would start.
It's a long ways.
Whatever. Yeah, and so, ODOT came in, they wanted to use that site with us, they provided a bunch of help, paid for a bunch of improvements, but then we needed to get an agreement with them, and we needed the agreement to be fair to both them and us, since they'd put quite an investment in it. But again, do you just accept their proposal, not really knowing the technical jargon that's, that's full of, that's encasing this agreement from their professional perspective? So, again, we brought Day Wireless, amended our agreement with them, and they negotiated that ODOT agreement, and you can see they're actually paying some stuff even though they made a major contribution. So, from my perspective, when Richard brought this issue to me, I said, the first thing I said was, you need to get Day Wireless involved. They're a professional operation, they manage tower sites for a living, they do this every day, our current agreement with them could be expanded, and it would just take a huge headache away from the county. In addition to that, I actually think you'd make money doing it.
Thank you, sir.
That's my two cents.
Thanks, Dan.
It was worth more than two cents, by the way.
Twelve and a half.
Mr. Robbins? You still there?
Yes.
Happy birthday again. Did you have some, Commissioner Boyce here, did you have something you could add, contribute?
Uh, no, I, I agree with Dan and, um, what do you have to say there? You know, after being in the middle of it, it's, it's a really big animal for somebody that has been in the business or from that profession to be able to manage and take care of the site, so I think it's kind of out of the realm of, of the county, and they definitely need Day Wireless to help. They're, they're very good to work with, I did a little research while I was there to see if there was anybody else that could do what they do in that area, and you know, there isn't anybody that can do what they do. They're set up in that region, and I, I think you, you're, they're, they're the people to do it, obviously.
Okay.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, sir.
We miss you, but you left things in very good hands.
Yeah, great, that's good to hear.
All right, so we want to move forward with a...
Uh, it looks like we would have to do a couple, we're gonna need some contracts.
We're also gonna move forward to the ordinance as well.
Yeah.
So, an hourly until we get the ordinance in place, is that the way it's gonna look? We can't make any actual decisions here, this is because it's a workshop, but we can get it on Wednesday, agenda to make a, a decision on it, yes.
Okay, on the hourly rate, and we will then get started on the rate schedule and the amendment.
And then we'll move forward with the ordinance, and we'll also have to have a contract with, the contract negotiation.
Excellent, well, thank you so much. I think you're making the right decision, if that's the decision you should make.
Well, we got some pretty good people that have advised us, so we entrust a lot into them as well. Mr. Boyce?
Just verify what the, the sequence is, again, the, the rent schedule?
Rent schedule is gonna be 125 an hour, from what I understand?
The, the rate for, for getting these agreements in shape is 125 an hour. As we're working on that, we should also work on that rate schedule, get that approved through the county, and then I will prepare an amendment to our site management agreement, also that will require your approval and signature on, and then we will have all our bases covered. We'll have the new agreements, a new rate schedule going forward, and then we will begin the billing.
And the ordinance is the very be, very beginning.
Well, we have to have an ordinance for this to move forward as well.
Got you.
An ordinance to adopt the site rent schedule for what the county will charge public agencies.
She'll, she'll give us the recommendations for what the site rents will be, and then we'll approve that and make that an ordinance.
Nothing else here, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I had that right.
Good job.
Can I, Ms. Smalzer?
Well, I was just gonna say, so just talk a little bit about our schedule, so in order to get it on next Wednesday's meeting, we would need that by Friday, and not to put pressure on you to move a little fast, but if we want to get it into the budget, we need to move a little quickly on some of these proposals so that we can get that allocated in there, so, actually today's, tomorrow's the deadline to get stuff to us for the budget, so, and we understand it's still coming, but just, you know, we are in a little bit of a rush, so if we can just keep it moving really quick.
Definitely, the first thing would be the, the approval of the hourly rate, which it is already in our site management agreement, so I guess I need you to tell me what you need from me, or if it's something Richard needs to draft to get it on your schedule and approved.
Just some language with the, we have the existing agreement, just something called amendment to the site management agreement, and then a paragraph of what the amendment is, and then just, once you get that to us, we'll put it in an order to approve that, and that'll get that going.
Okay, now the, it's my understanding the amendment is for adding the public agency leases?
What you talked about today.
Okay, but what about the hourly rate?
Well, I thought you said the hourly rate's already in the agreement.
It is, but it sounds like you need to approve that amount I'm proposing for the amount of hours, or?
Sure, you would, what you would then, what you would do, because this is a different task, right? It's a new task based on that hourly rate, so just have like, you know, how many hours, what it's gonna be doing, total estimate, something like that.
Defining, defining that in the amendment.
But I think you've got my email, and if you just email me, you know, something, and I can probably come up with a sample of another one that I've seen. Anyway, I think we could have this conversation.
And we have one halfway drafted, it just needs refinement.
Good, all right, let's work on it.
I'm not positive I will have it for you by tomorrow, but the following Friday would work as well for submission, is that correct?
Um, if you do the following Friday, we don't have a meeting the next week, so then you're looking at a whole nother, then you're looking at...
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Okay. So try to do it tonight, or tomorrow.
Captain?
Thank you.
First of all, I think bringing Day Wireless on to handle this is, will be a great thing, but I want to throw out a couple of things. I didn't, I missed part of it, but on some of the system revenue, you're talking about going to our users that are public agencies that have fire trucks and have cop cars and that kind of stuff, you gotta remember, you're looking at small agencies that we already have contracts with for dispatch services that they already pay. Most of these small fire departments, they might have 10 trucks, and they might have 30 volunteers that all have a portable or a pager, but they have an income that's about this big. So I want you to keep that into, in perspective when you start looking at that. The other thing that I heard that Roadmaster recommend is that you take the additional 911 tax revenue that's going to be coming in and put towards this project. I do think we need to build a reserve, but you also have a 911 center that also is outdated that this whole community also relies upon, that is also underfunded, but also, you know, I, I, I get where it's coming from, but I want you to consider that before you jump in on Wednesday and make a decision that you're going to start affecting everybody.
That's kind of getting a little bit out of the realm of it, because we're not gonna be making that decision on Wednesday.
But it's the for, it's the, it's the forerunner to that.
Right, and I understand that, but we'll, we'll be getting to that during budget season is when we'll get to that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you under, you know, that there's a whole other realm that goes to this, so.
I understand, thank you.
But, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, but Kathy McDonald, your point on the rural fire departments is a very good one. You said small budgets and volunteers, and yeah, I, I'm glad you mentioned that, thank you.
Okay, so you have clear direction, Ms. Smalzer? All right, next we're going to go to 3B, Aquatic Safety Program. Mr. Martinez?
So before Luke gets started, I told him I would just do a little reminder and introduction. JJ, can you help him with his presentation? So...
She's got the mouse there, so.
Well, we're getting that loaded, just a refresher, so it was last summer that I spoke with each of you individually about Mr. Martinez's proposal for an aquatic safety program, and he needed support for some grants, so we had given some support on that, and he finally has it all put together, he finally has some of the grant money committed, so he's ready to roll it out and see if we can actually get it implemented in time for this summer.
Just looked this up, thank you. Thank you Commissioners, thank you Julie, Mrs. Smalzer, for your support and being able to communicate with me during that time. Let's see, where are we at here?
Bottom, right?
There we go.
It's really touching.
Yeah, it is.
We can go into the software on that and, and slow that down, it's got a speed thing on it, you can slow it down.
Where we got, where's the slideshow on this? Slideshow?
Go to the far left, right there.
One more, right there you go. Okay, thank you. My name's Luke Martinez, I'm actually a county employee, or seasonal county employee. I work part-time with the Marine Department as a Marine Safety Officer, grant-funded position, and then in the summertime, I guide paddled trips on the Checko River and the Pacific Ocean. So this concept came around about five years ago, when there was a perceived vision that we were having increased visitors in our ocean shores area. The program first started as an idea that the state parks, Oregon State Parks and Recreation Division could take on as a pilot program and implement into their program. However, it's something I'll get on later on, that, that's not possible at this moment. So, there we go, keep going. Oops. Is there a button on this, and I apologize? Just, what's that? Okay.
Or if you go in the far left corner.
Hey Luke, come and get this, that might float you.
So let's talk about our amazing county and the amount of water that we've got in it. Curry County has 361 square miles of water from our northern border with the New River to the south on the Windchuck. Curry County, 361 square miles of water within the county is the most in a county in the entire state of Oregon. Okay, so just right-click?
Oh, Roadmaster can leave.
Okay, so that water within the county does not include the over 100 miles of coastline.
Could you stand by one second? We still have the Roadmaster on the phone, he can, he can go.
I think Doug just left.
Doug, are you on the phone?
That might have been him hanging up, okay. Sorry. Sorry, Luke.
Oh, no problem, thanks. So we've got our 100 miles of coastline, pretty scenic, incredible stretch of ocean shores. So what do we do with all this water in our area? We like to recreate, right? Be rafting, boating.
Is that mad?
Kayaking, windsurfing, kiting, surfing, there's so many possibilities to do in our region. Our state of Oregon, 69% of Oregon residents participate in outdoor recreation each year. I'm sure this statistic will be going up each year. So, in 2017, the SCORP report, which is the State Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan, came up with a state scale of the top activities that the population of Oregon does. As you can see, the number five, the number fifth thing that people do in the state of Oregon is they go to the beach. We all love go to the beach, ocean shores, and our beautiful state of Oregon. Here we go. This is in Myers Creek, I'm just putting the arrows on how many people, it's kind of a common occurrence. Five years ago, I didn't see this all the time, doesn't look like a lot of people, but this is a normal thing that we see on a daily occurrence now. Sometimes a lot more in the last summer. In 2015, Travel Oregon began, began a very rigorous campaign to advertise our state and tourism as an economic driver. In the summertime, in the last three years, central and northern Oregon have pretty much been a carrying capacity for visitors, so they have then begun a more aggressive campaign to push them down to our southern shores, which is nice for our businesses and restaurants and whatnot, but as you can see, the kind of highlighting some areas, this is, I don't know if you're familiar with this, Secret Beach area and the Samuel Boardman H State Park corridor, which has become very, very popular. In that SCORP report, after 2017, they came up with a plan, so 2019 to 2023, that provides guidance and information for federal, state, and local units of government and the private sector. So if you can see this, the question is, please specify the degree to which the following emerging trends are challenges or concerns for your agency, and this is for state agencies and county agencies in the state. They said here, addressing a growing level of safety and security concerns associated with public use of park and recreation facilities. The other one I highlighted on there that I'll get to is respond to emerging or new types of outdoor recreation activities. And between pickleball and dog parks is paddle boarding. There's a, with new technology, increasing amount of different aquatic recreation types. And below that, I just want to highlight something that we'll get to here in a bit, is addressing the lack of youth engagement in outdoor recreation. So this is again, the, the SCORP plan for 2019 and 2023. So, it's here right now. What do we currently have with this emerging trend of aquatic recreation in our area? What do we have in place right now within our county to, to, to help with aquatic safety? So currently, aquatic safety in Curry County is maintained through regional partnerships between the Curry County Sheriff's Office, the Oregon State Police, their Fish and Game Department, the United States Forest Service, the Gold Beach Ranger District, the Oregon State Marine Board, and the United States Coast Guard. Oregon State Parks and Recreation Division practices beach safety through signage and their beach rangers, however, does not get involved in the aquatic environment, their hands off, their policy does not allow, allow them to get near the water or on the water. For the county, there is currently one marine deputy who is tasked with patrolling the region's waterways to uphold state marine laws, as well as respond to any marine-related emergencies, and educate the public in safe aquatic practices. This deputy, with over 25 years' experience, has helped build a program of notable excellence. The Sheriff's Office also hosts a warn-witting Volunteer SAR program. Due to a lack of resources and available staff time, it is difficult for these agencies to put an emphasis on practicing preventative aquatic safety measures, aquatic safety education, and collecting the data of our aquatic users, in particular, the ocean shores region. So, back to the SCORP report, what is the single most important thing that park and forest managers can do to help you participate in outdoor recreation? Improve visitor safety is one of their highlights in that list. So, we have this incredible, truly wild rivers coastline with an increasing trend of aquatic recreation, and what we have seen in the past five years is an increase in SAR rescues and recoveries. In two, from 2010 to 2018, there were 15 drownings in Curry County, eight, eight of those related to boating. In 2016, one of those was, they claimed due to a rip current, and in 2018, there was one due to high surf down at Indian Sands. So, the state came out with a report too, actually it was the, the whole west coast, came out, just came out with a recent report on sneaker waves, which is something that occurs in the Pacific Northwest. In the Pacific Northwest, from 2005 to 2017, there were 29 deaths related to sneaker waves in the Pacific Northwest. 15 of those were in Oregon, and 14 were of those in Northern California to the south. Of those 15 in Oregon, seven of those occurred in Curry County. All of those deaths from 2005 to 2017 were between the months of October and April during our high surf season. So, picture of a rescue, so the economic cost of rescues. Short-duration rescues cost somewhere around, and this is estimated via, through the OS, from the Oregon State Police, short-duration rescues $30,000. Longer-duration rescues are over $100,000. So, not only economic cost, but the safety to our volunteers and professionals. So, with all this, and the data that we have to look at, and the emerging trend, the Aquatic Safety Program looks at the mission of to reduce the incidence of death and injury in Curry County's aquatic environment through preventative measures, public education, and readiness guided by professional standards and data-driven objectives. So now that we know all this data, I'm gonna go into what the, what the program's mission and objectives are. So, first objective, patrol waterways and shorelines. So this, again, is a, is a very large cooperative effort between all the agencies that exist here in this county. Uh, the first is to educate the users of our inherent dangers. So, for example, uh, we have a lot of folks that recreate, come from far away or live here and aren't too sure what exactly is going on in that environment. They may have been here for a long time and think that they know, but they don't. And so this program aims to educate those users of the inherent danger that may exist and point them in the right direction. We have a lot of local knowledge. This, this area is dangerous right now. Why don't you move to this other area? Uh, one of, one of the tactics with that is that we'll broadcast the National Weather Service warnings, such as beach, they, they just came out with in two thousand eighteen, beach safety warnings, uh, sneaker wave warnings that Jeremy posts online. Those are new, pretty new, new, like I said, in two thousand eighteen. Um, and so they've been very helpful, helpful with a lot of the data. So, people can read signs, see it on social media posts, but again, not everybody's aware of those warnings. And so by having a boots-on-the-ground presence on those beaches or wherever those warning spots maybe, uh, could save somebody's life. Uh, the question I get a lot is, well, how can you be everywhere in the county? Like I said, we've got a lot, a huge range. And one of the key components of this program is to collaborate with partners. Uh, the sheriff's office, OSP, state parks, US Forest Service. It's imperative that these programs work together to help improve aquatic safety and be on a constant communication scale. Second objective, this is something that is currently done through the sheriff's office and continue, will continue to be, but it's the education of the youth. It's a grant-funded portion through the state marine board. And it's, the, the goal of the project is to bring, uh, not only the Oregon State Marine Board curriculum, which is based off aquatic safety stewardship messages and scientific principles, it's called the WaterWits Program, but it's just to, to get into the schools and teach as much of the youth as we can about our region, the waterways, what's out there, and what they can do to recreate in it. So back to that SCORP report, uh, I don't remember what I said, that an emerging trend is that kids aren't getting outside enough. They're not getting out enough outdoor recreation. So this program in partnership with the SEND program, the Curry County Library, um, will provide aquatic outdoor recreation opportunities with, with the SEND after-school program. So basically summertime, summer camps, we get the kids out in the water so that they can recreate different, different, uh, different styles. Here they're surfing. Uh, something that's important about this, whoops, is we're creating, creating water-ready kids. Something that Brookings does, but Central Curry does not do yet, is Brookings sends all of its third graders to swim lessons at the pool, which is pretty, pretty cool. Rotary pays for it. Something that hopefully Central Curry can do, but something that's, it's, it's a great program. So we're hoping something like that would be possible. Second is skills to succeed in the aquatic environment. The program will help, help our youth, learn the skills and practices so that they can see in the aquatic environment and do it safely and educate their, uh, their fellow users. Third part, which is a big part, is the data collection. We have these visitors and users in our region, but we don't really know who's coming, what they're doing, when they're doing it, why they're doing it, and how they're doing it. The, the program with using existing databases that are already out there and new databases that we will create or in the process of creating, will ask those questions, uh, through contact forms or just perception, uh, when doing patrols. Uh, this data could be very important to not only our tourism sector, but agencies in helping, uh, management and, and looking for future management practices. The fourth, fourth objective, and this is part of the, the RAC grant that was awarded, is the Natural Resource Protection and Stewardship Education. So working with our collaborative partners, we will, uh, help keep wild and scenic river quarters and ocean shores safe and clean. This is a camp, um, on, at Redwood Bar that was cleaned up last year that was abandoned. This is kind of a emerging trend as well. So what are the measurable outcomes from the program? We can measure that we prevented injury and the loss of life through our data collection. Uh, we can measure that we educated the public and the youth through our data collection. We can again, through the data collection, determine who, what, when, where, and why was happening. Uh, and we can also help measure, help enhance our community resiliency. The more people we educate of what we have, what's going on, uh, the more people will learn and it'll become a more friendly and safer environment to visit. How do we know this will work? That's a big question. Well, uh, in the state of Oregon, nothing like this really exists yet. Our partners to the south in the Redwood District in Humboldt County, they, their California State Parks program just brought up two, two guards to patrol from, uh, basically Del, from Delnort County down into Humboldt County, because they're seeing the same things that we are seeing in our region. Uh, they're kind of connected to the Wild Rivers Coast. It's just emerging trend of tourism and, uh, increasing aquatic recreation. Also, so the closest component that we have, um, would be Sonoma County. Sonoma County staffs five different guards in their county. Uh, and since the implementation of their program, uh, has seen a decrease in the, in injury and the loss of life in the ocean shores region. Nationally, statistics show that any shores or municipalities that have guards on hand, they're seeing a reduction, significant reduction in injury and loss of life. So what next? Uh, the, the program, thanks to the county, was awarded a Title II RAC grant. After approval, the, the work can begin, uh, we're hoping by May. It's still in the agreement process, so there's still agreements being made, uh, for the final draft. And when that final draft is done, then it will be presented to you. That, that portion will cover work only on the Rogue Siskiyou National Forest. The other, uh, grants that are out and, uh, pending funding, the decisions come March one and the middle of April. One of those is, um, for the education component and the other one is for the ocean shores component. Uh, something just to point out that this program is a hundred, would be a hundred percent grant-funded. Any questions? Go ahead.
Commissioner Gold?
Well, all of the grant monies, assuming you get those, go through the county and they'd be passed through?
Yes.
Accounts?
Yes.
Is there any administrative fee associated with that?
Uh, yeah, so for the, the county, there was a ten percent administrative fee added to the grant.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Go ahead.
So just, uh, take that a little further. So, um, Mr. Martinez would be considered a grant-funded county employee. So he would be on our payroll. He'd be located within our, he'd, um, be on our phone tree. He'd be in our building. He'd actually be sitting with emergency management. So that's where people would find him when he's not out on the road or doing education presentations and everything. But for all appearances, he would appear to be just another county employee, um, except for the fact that he is, it is proposed, he'd be one hundred percent grant-funded as Luca said. And there is that small administrative support or portion that would go to administrative support to help with the, the financial tracking of the grants, things of that nature.
Okay, so is that job that you'd be getting just based on the grant and once the grant's gone, it's gone?
Yeah, so right now, the, it's a pilot program. It's, uh, the grants were written for a year.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a year, it's a year grant, yeah.
Two things. Firstly, what are the total of the grants?
Uh, right, right now, the, the totality of those three grants is close to eighty-four thousand.
Okay.
And that will fund a full-time position, uh, with, with, uh, minimum, so, and also minimum equipment needs.
Captain McDonald, you have a minute? If you wouldn't mind, I just wondering, you know, how, how does the sheriff's department and local police feel about this application?
My only, or the sheriff's offices, and the sheriff and I have discussed that, and we've discussed it with Mr. Martinez in the past. Um, right now, the beaches are the purview of the, of the state of Oregon.
Coast Guard.
And, well, and the Coast Guard, I mean, we can respond up to three miles out for search and rescue or marine program. But if we, my only concern with the whole program is the beaches and if we start taking on beach patrol, lifeguard-type duties, that the first time we put a post out or it's known that we have a beach patrol and we don't have a beach patrol there and something happens, the liability we open the county up to. Like I said, currently, the, the whole Oregon coastline belongs to the Oregon State Police. They're, they are the responsible agency for responding to any emergency or any, even though search and rescue, we all respond, but the actual organization that's responsible for incidents on the beach is the Oregon State Police.
Okay.
And I don't know that, I know the sheriff's office does not want to assume that role and responsibility and that liability. We're responsible for search and rescue in, in the county. The sheriff's office in the county already is. Um, but like I said, we're not responsible for beach patrol. We're not responsible for lifeguard. And we do not want to accept that liability on, on the office of the sheriff and for the county. So that's, that's our only concern. As far as the waterway safety and the education for the kids and all that stuff, and putting a message out about, hey, be prepared for sneaker waves. Don't turn your back on the ocean because she's not a nice person. Um, I'm one hundred percent, and we're one hundred percent in support of that. Our only problem is the lifeguard stuff and what kind of liability is that open us up for?
Mr. Martinez, could you step back up, please?
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask you, uh, are you, are you, are you going to be working out agreements with the sheriff's department, the local police departments?
Yeah, so that's, and that's been a discussion with the, the sheriff. So, as this program stated, I've, I've highlighted the key term preventative measures, so educating, educating the public. Uh, the moment that it goes from a preventative measure of you're in the wrong place at the wrong time to possible rescue or, or recovery, the hat comes off and it goes to a SAR.
Okay.
Covers to, go to SAR. So that's how that is. The, the lifeguarding thing is something that's interesting, again, and Captain brings up a great, a great issue, is the liability. California State Parks has a pretty incredible lifeguarding program. Uh, this program, as I said, professional standards. The professional standards that we're talking about is the USLA, which is the United States Life Saving Association, and the Oregon State Marine Board. Both have their standards. The USLA is a national standard that, uh, it's a pretty large folder of, of standards that you have to keep for a year to, to get that. Now, the program would like to, to get to those standards. Why? Because it's best practices. Again, when it goes from the situation of a, of a preventative measure to a rescue, it's switching hats. So that's something that the sheriff and I have, uh, discussed. But yes, again, the, the communication would have to be pretty clear there. Again, in this, this program, something I would like to say is that what's in place right now, the fantastic people that are doing their jobs, a hundred percent. What we don't have in this region is the resources to come in and help as with this emerging trend happens. Travel Oregon has a one point eight-three percent, uh, TLT transient lodging tax. They get their budget from the one point eight-three, uh, state transient, transient tax, correct? That's huge. Trying to get them to fund into public safety has been a difficult process. It is not occurring. So it's something that just needs to be addressed. I'm hoping that this again is a pilot program. This is something that could be researched to see if this can continue to happen. Our agencies need help. And that's what this program is intending to do, is help our cooperative partners in our aquatic environment.
Commissioner Boyce? Hey, thank you Luke. Great presentation and I certainly congratulate you on the, the RAC grant. I think you aced out our efforts to have a Curry forestry program someday. But no, we're very happy for you. And, uh, just a couple of quick questions. If I understood correctly, you said fifteen, I think you said fifteen sneaker waves. What time period and was that in seven years?
Yeah, that was.
Or seven in Curry County. What was the timeline on that?
Fifteen. So it was two thousand five to two thousand seventeen.
So half of the, of the deaths were in Curry County and the entire Oregon coast.
Yeah. So we had, um, now I'll have to look at the, at the line again. There was a three. There's been three, two occurrences, uh, at Aggett Beach up by Blanco. That's been a kind of a sticky spot.
Three years ago, four, yeah, three years ago, I think.
And that was about a three years ago.
No.
No, I mean, up northern Oregon.
And I'll have to look at the other occurrence. Yeah, there's, there's been actually, OSU just did a big report on it and, and they've got them, they've got them down to the, the day event, the swell periods and what was going on. So again, this program's trying to, to target those zones where, that, that, that may be a, a problem. A lot of it depends on local knowledge, communicating with partners and finding out where those spots could be. This pullout's got so many people right now, you know, what are they doing? There's also a, a four-foot at twenty-second period swell that's coming in right now. And so trying to address, you know, address some of those issues and, and, and prevent it before it happens.
Couple more. Uh, Delnort, Humboldt County. You said they have two guards between the two counties or did I misunderstand?
Uh, so this is, this is, uh, California State Parks. California State Parks, the Redwood District, has two guards on full-time staff now. Uh, and they, their, their, their range just moved up to Delnort.
So that's for both, yeah, okay. I understand that.
Yeah.
Back to the RAC grant. Uh, I didn't know when you applied for that, you had covered four administrative fees there. I didn't think that was part of his grant. Did I?
His, um, so he has multiple grants going right, grant applications out there right now. He has several of them going at the same time.
But the last one was just one, right?
That's just one, yeah. So the other ones pending, March one is decision, and then the middle of April, we'll have a decision as well.
Okay. So we want to keep that going. We want to help you on that. So, uh, but the last one did not have administrative fees included in that grant.
Uh, there should have been a little bit of administrative fees, I believe. Um, I can pull that up, but I can get you that.
It's not a huge thing, but I, I, just, just in the interest of knowing.
Okay, yeah. I'll get you that.
Who, okay, my last question, Mr. Chair. Uh, who does the, the beach safety warnings? And you, you mentioned the state police?
Yeah, so as Captain Phil, uh, Phil McDonald, uh, stated, so OSP covers the ocean shores. The, the management practice goes under, uh, Oregon starts, Oregon State Parks and Recreation. However, they have a hands-off aquatic policy.
Okay.
Once it's the water, during those events, they're not on the beach. They're informing people, but not on the beach.
So we gotta, we gotta hope for, uh, improved state police budgets too throughout, you know, the legislature. That's another issue. And so maybe we'll get you some help that way some.
Again, as I said, this, the first concept of this, uh, project was, is, was for state parks as, as a pilot program for them. Just because our partners to the, or our neighbors to the south, California State Parks has such an incredible, uh, program. Again, we're dealing with a different environment up here as well, and that's why kind of, uh, California State Parks moved up the guards to the, to Delnort and Humboldt County, is that what we have here is, is, it's not warm water, it's cold water. As soon as people make contact, it, it's a life-changing experience right there and then. So it's something why, again, the, the preventative measures are trying to just keep people safe before they get in the water. Um, because it goes from life to death pretty quickly.
All right. Congratulations. Mr. Schmelzer?
One more question, Luke.
Yes.
So the last time we talked, everything was covered with the grants that were anticipated.
Right.
Um, there was some question about the truck. You said you thought you had someone to cover a vehicle. Do you have the vehicle taken care of?
Yeah, so the vehicle, so the, the RAC grant through the, and this is part of the agreement through the Forest Service. The Forest Service should keep their fleet, has been very kind to offer to check out a vehicle when needed. So that will cover the title, that will cover work on the Rogue Siskiyou National Forest. This position will be driving a Forest Service truck, which is great. If the other grants come through, then that's where again, yeah, we're looking to allocate a vehicle for that portion, ocean shores, which is a big part. So that's something that's in the process.
Okay.
So, as he gets the grants and they come forward, if we approve them or accept them, that's basically giving our approval of the program for him to proceed with it, unless the board would prefer something more formal. Like an order establishing a pilot program.
Whatever it takes to give him, excuse me.
Oh, go ahead.
Doctor, whatever it takes to give him full support, this is, you know, you mentioned that, if I may? You mentioned the, uh, not like you saw it five years ago. I mean, even with the mild winters that we've had lately, you do, you see, and I referenced, uh, out-of-state license plates. When I was first in the tourism business thirty years ago, you never, almost never saw, you know, outside California or Washington, license plates on the, on Highway one oh one. And now it is more than you see Oregon plates. So to your point, uh, this is going to keep growing, the demand, uh, what we have here. Best thing we can do is position ourselves to manage well. So yeah, I'd, I'd want to, whatever you recommend, Director Schmelzer, that would give him the most support in his program, the most support.
Why don't we just go with, uh, Councilor Huddles', uh, advice on this as to how to proceed? I think in concept, we're all with it, but we just want to make sure it's all legally together.
So when the agreement comes back, I'll get, I'll give it to Mrs. Schmelzer for the, the RAC grant? She can, um, she is the signing authority on it.
I didn't, we'd have to create an employment position, right? And he's going to be a county employee and.
Well, right now, he's, you're actually grant-funded as well. And I don't, he does get, Luke, you do get benefits right now, I think.
No, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm seasonal, I'm part-time seasonal.
But with the grants, you know, it's not like we're going to advertise for this position or anything. So we would just treat it the same as we have other grant positions and just follow the same process.
Sure, but you mentioned he'd be a county employee and, you know, so it would basically be, you know?
I don't know if he'd be an employee, a county employee, he'd be representative of the county, but I don't know if he'd be a county employee.
So the way, when he checked into it a while ago, you know, he looked at the benefits and made sure all that was in his budget to make sure that he was, everything was covered, to make sure all the costs were covered. So we would have, we would run him through as a county employee for the purpose of, you know, that grant money is coming in and then we're going to issue him a paycheck out of it through our department. So he, he does get treated as a county employee. He's a grant-funded county employee.
I think we have other positions that are grant-funded as well, so we just model it after that.
Yeah, like a Lisha or Truvoka and some of those other programs.
The only other issue we'd have then is a vehicle and it would be?
He's trying to get that right now.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Just get all you can.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, Luke. Next, we have three C, Citizen Revenue Task Force. Ms. Schmelzer?
Yeah, so the board had requested, or we talked about bringing this to a workshop. We had a Citizen Revenue Task Force and its purpose was to serve a, it had a task it had to achieve. And then it did its report. They gave our, their report to us last spring. And upon that, according to the order that approved that committee, that task force, they were to be dissolved. We didn't realize that. We kept using them and actually met with them maybe a month or so ago. So we have it on the workshop to decide, do we want to go forward with the Citizen Revenue Task Force? Renew that, advertise it. Do we want to do something else or nothing at all at this point? We, the strategic plan does talk about the need for either a employee group or a task force or committee to look at some bigger purchases or come up with revenue ideas. So we just have to decide, since that task force is done, because they completed their task, what do we want to do moving forward?
Commissioner Gold?
I really think it's important that we involve interested citizens in possible avenues of getting revenue for the county and maybe even employees. I don't know, but I think there's going to be more buy-in from the, the outside citizens if citizens are involved in this.
Mr. Boyce?
I, I think it's fine if we, if we have options. I've stated before, we're all against raising property taxes. I don't know whether options there are that haven't already been discussed and basically devalued or discontinued or, yeah, I don't know. I've come up with a couple of ideas, didn't get any help. So it's up to the board to decide if, and do you want a commissioner involved? Do you want the board involved in that group in any way?
Well, I personally think there's a lot of wisdom to, for, for people to banter ideas around and talk about different revenue sources. I, I think it's great. You know, everybody always says to Ms. Schmelzer, she thinks out of the box, well, you know, when you get a group of people to get together and sit and talk about different items and, and different ideas on how to do things, you can, you can come up with some great ideas and sometimes stumble on one. But, you know, it's a great way to get good, smart people together and just sit and talk about the things of the county and how to raise revenue sources and then bring, bring those ideas to the board. I think it's a great idea.
I, I certainly wouldn't oppose it. I tried twice and once in 17, one in 18. And I had three former county commissioners very much involved and wanting to help. And I was accused of being political and they were nonpartisan, so they lost interest. And, and maybe we can recover from that and build something with some, some production. I would, yeah, I would definitely support that.
Do we have any public comment out here on this? Mr. Barnes?
Good afternoon.
That is your name, right?
Yes, it is. Still, David Barnes. I, I think my service on the Citizens Revenue Task Force might have been my shortest appointment ever, but I think you had me for about three weeks there. But why confine yourselves to just revenue? You know, there's, I remember back in Brookings a few months ago, you were talking about 2377, that tax break bill for new multifamily housing and rehabbing a multifamily housing. And I remember you would discuss it there, maybe having the Citizens Revenue Task Force looking at ways to advance that to the people, you know? What you went through this morning over this, the, the absent owner property tax. You know, maybe that's something that a, a citizens, an advisory panel maybe of people that you bring together before it goes to the public. I, at the meeting that you had down in Swak, Commissioner Boyce, there was a gentleman there, a grad student who was writing his master's thesis. And he had up the steps on the wall of the, of a, of a planning process and where people get involved in it. And I happened to look at that and once you get to having a rough draft of something, there's very little impact that the public can have on it going from there. And I think that, you know, it's important to add people at the beginning instead of at the end, you know? And that's just my feeling on it.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
I think part of the problem in the past has been that things have not really been well thought out and planned properly. It was just kind of a shoot-from-the-hip type of thing. And whatever we do, I think it needs to be well-planned and, and thought out before you put it before the voters.
Well? Commissioner Boyce?
Well, just in 2013, no, excuse me, was it 16? Where we had the Citizens Advisory Committee that did a lot of what Mr. Barnes just mentioned. It was a, what, a 30-page doc, document that covered so many aspects. I still have it in my office. I'd like to say I've read it more than once. I, I haven't, but it contains some very good information. It was not shoot-from-the-hip, if I may respectfully disagree. Those people just kind of threw up their hands because nothing was taken from it or implemented from it. So that is a great document. If the board wanted to evolve this into a, adapting it to something beyond just revenue, absentee, as, as Mr. Barnes just mentioned, there might be some real merit in that. They would essentially be doing some of our homework for us, but their recommendations, I would think, more often than not, would carry some incredibly solid weight. That's all I have. And I do have that 2016 plan if anybody wants a copy.
Commissioner Gold?
I think it would be important for the group to look at that report and come up with ideas. Why reinvent the wheel? And I agree with Mr. Barnes as far as expanding it and looking at all avenues. It's not just revenue. That's how maybe we can economize in certain areas and so forth, so.
Real quickly, my vision on it was more that it would be a pro se type of thing where you have 2377. Okay, would you guys look at this and see how we can market this? We have the owner absent tax. Can you guys look at this? Rather than coming back with a gigantic plan, like a master plan of everything and this is what we see out here. I would think you would, I, my idea on it anyway would, would, that it would be more issue-specific and, and put together, you know, come together for a specific topic only and they give their advice on one topic at a time, you know, rather than just a big thing with a long report.
So just a comment on that, you know, there has been repeatedly, this county puts together task force groups, councils, et cetera, and they come up with these lists and the list doesn't go anywhere, so we put together another group and they end up coming up with the same stuff over and over on these lists. And so there, I think there is some merit to what Mr. Barnes is talking about. I mean, let's stop looking, let's just take a break and stop looking at the revenue. I'm not saying right, let's keep going with what we're doing right now. But let's take a, take a, a new look at those old lists and say, here's some ideas that keep coming up over and over and over again. Run with it and, and tell us how we can get this adopted. What's involved in it and how can we get it adopted?
One at a time. I, I agree with you. You have to concentrate on one thing at a time to, to really do it well.
I agree.
Commissioner Boyce?
In all fairness to Commissioner Huxley, that's why he was slow to approve additional committees and task forces, what I described a minute ago and then you supported and the frustration that comes with that. Second point, if I may, Mr. Chair, what would you title that? You just said issue-specific.
Right.
How could we title that and get support from the community and make?
Start a Citizens Advisory Panel, you know?
Okay.
Where it's, it wouldn't even have to be necessarily, you would have a sitting panel, but there's enough people in this county with experience in a vast wealth of areas that if it becomes a specific area, you ask for somebody else, you know, you ask people to come in and speak to you like you've done here today. You know, Rich brought out two other roadmasters to speak about stuff. There's a wealth of experience and knowledge in this county that, you know, we can, it's, it's our, one of our best resources. And, you know, so many of us retire here and bring what we learned in the outside world with us and, you know, it's, that's all.
Thank you. I know that part of doing business is people's feelings getting hurt too. So, you know, my fear with that is if we bring a one-on-one thing to, to a specific group and they make their adjustments to it and we decide against it and then that happens two or three times and we're right back to where we were. Whereas commissioners, Commissioner Boyce and Commissioner Gold vote for something that I vote against time after time. It's frustrating, but hopefully we can work through that. And then, you know, as we vote against each other sometimes on things, it's not, there's no offense taken. So I would hope that if we do this, I would like to see what Commissioner Boyce said started first. And that is to dust off that, that one that you currently have in your office. And let's reform an advisory committee to look at that large document first and see if there's anything in there that we could viably use and then, and then move forward from there.
All right, Mr. Commissioner Boyce, are you referring to the, the work that the Property Real Task, the, the Real Property Task Force did?
I think they generated that report at the end of their 20-page report.
Okay.
I can't remember though, off the top of my head.
Yeah.
What the, what the title of their organization was or their committee.
So I.
They did a ton of work.
Yeah, so, so I led that, so I had led that group and put together, I led that group and put together the findings and we are slowly working through all of that at the current time. You know, it was, had talked about what to do with those Floris Lake parcels and so. So I, we have pretty clear marching orders on that one. But there's other ones that have come up through the years and you've, you know, I think there was the Kettle Commission, which really was controversial or, not Kettle Commission, it was the Blue, Blue Kettle Committee or something.
That's issue-specific.
Blue Ribbon Committee.
Blue Ribbon Committee. And then there was one called the Big Idea Committee. There's, I've got all these folders in my office of all these different groups through time. And when you look at them, they pretty much always come to the same conclusions. But nobody takes it to the next level or they haven't been. We are now. We've been trying to whittle down those lists, but they could help with that.
So should the direction be then that we, we approve that you move forward to reform a Citizens Action Committee? Or what do you want to name it? Citizens Action Committee, Advisory Committee? Citizens Advisory Committee?
Sure. I can work on that and then have an ordinance of specific, what their purpose would be and what is expected of them.
Okay.
Council and, John, Council has some really good models out there and some other ones we could follow.
Yeah, it, it sounds like, you know, when, with it, it would be a standing committee and when a thorny or novel issue comes up, you assign it to them to do a report. They're kind of like a standing review committee, so yeah.
Commissioner Boyce?
These people, I agree, these people mostly retired. They come from a variety of backgrounds and want to come and live here for understandable reasons that we're familiar with. For us to collect them though, that's another issue. And, and then to, to recruit them and to give them confidence that we're on a different track. And that's basically what everyone has said here today. How do we, how do we pay attention and, and show that respect that, yeah, it's a new day. It's a new task and a new vision. So recruit and then pull them in and give them a reason to think their time spent is going to be really respected and, and hopefully utilized.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Is there anything further? This workshop is adjourned.
Hey, John.